Welcome to our November 2024 Board Meeting, to those of you in the room. And we have a full house tonight. It's great to see so many people here with us and to those at home watching remotely. Ms. Beam, would you call roll?
Mr. Babbitt.
Here.
Mr. Boyd.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would accept a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented. Second.
Motion by Julie Steele, seconded by Claire Reagan.
Mrs. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt.
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich.
Yes.
Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Recognitions and abort.
Good evening, everyone. We have a packed house tonight, so welcome to everyone who is here for our recognitions. To begin our recognitions tonight, I would like to welcome to the front Mrs. Ruth Ann Hackler and her family. Kansas Association of School Boards Executive Director, Dr. Brian Jordan, and KASB President, Tina Ray Scott, along with our Board of Education President, Dr. Stacy Yurkovich, and our Director of Community Development, Heather Schoonover. Well, tonight, we have a very unique recognition for a community leader who turned 100 years young this year. Yes, so Mrs. Ruth Ann Hackler is recognized tonight for being the longest-serving Olathe Board of Education member and for her dedication to the Kansas Association of School Boards. In 2014, the Olathe Public Schools Alumni Association inducted Ruth Ann to the district's Wall of Honor, which is just outside of this room. As a distinguished person of honor, and we are pleased to add on to this recognition by honoring her here tonight, so let us share just a couple of things about her dedication to the district. Ruth Ann graduated from Washburn University with a bachelor's degree and worked at the college to help fund her education. Her early commitment to education continued when she became a high school teacher in Topeka and then came to the Olathe School District where she taught business at John P. St. John Memorial High School in the early 1950s. She continued to be an advocate for public education by serving on the Olathe Board of Education from 1969 to 1991. That's 22 years for unpaid public service. And on the Kansas Association of School Boards for 10 years. She also served on the National School Boards Association, was a member of the Kansas House of Representatives, Director of the Metropolitan Kansas City United Community Services, Good Samaritan Board Member, longest-serving volunteer with the seniors' serving schools program, Parents as Teachers Board Member, Olathe Public Library Board Member and President, Olathe YMCA Board Member, and Olathe Medical Center Charitable Foundation Board Member, among other activities. Woo! And as I called up earlier, joining us at our meeting tonight is Dr. Brian Jordan from KASB and Tina Ray Scott. And in preparation for tonight's recognition, we also asked them to share some information about Ruth's years of service on KASB. And so they shared that Ruth Ann Hackler served on the KASB Board of Directors from 1975 to 1985 and was president from 1983 to 84. The knowledge and experience gained about statewide issues within K-12 education in Kansas as a KASB Board Member served as an excellent foundation for her leadership in the legislature. That understanding of the issues made her very influential in the Kansas Legislature as a Democratic Representative. Her election played a critical role in securing a rare Democratic majority in the Kansas House by just one vote. During her tenure at KASB, Hackler was influential in reforming the school finance system as a member of the House of Education Committee. These reforms addressed disparities in tax levies among school districts in Johnson County and resolved lawsuits, creating a system still in use today. Her legislative efforts reflected her commitment to public education, drawing from her experience as a school board leader to advocate for policies that aim to meet the needs of all students. And that's what brings us here tonight. Ruth Ann's impact not only on our Olathe Public Schools students, but her commitment to serving all students in Kansas. At 100 years young, the incredible impact she has had on public schools is undeniable, and we are all grateful and better for her service to our schools and state. Please join me in congratulating Ruth Ann Hackler. I know Ruth Ann wanted to say a few words, so we're going to bring up a wireless mic so that she can say a few words.
No, she said. Not data, wait. Did I do that right? Not, you can talk whatever you would like to say.
Oh, well, that's good.
Anything?
Remember, we are live.
We are live. Televised.
Well, it's a great honor. I'm very humbled beyond words, overwhelmed beyond words. I would like to say that I can't take credit for a life well-lived. I've had a lot of support from those of you in this audience. Two of my daughters are here, and I had a very patient family. My husband was very supportive. My girls probably did lots of things while I went home watching. Anyway, this is a great honor. I am so, I used the word overwhelmed, I'm going to use that again. I cannot believe these people came from Topeka, from KASB. I would like to say that anything that we have accomplished on the board during the time I was on it was because of several reasons. And we had a wonderful superintendent and Dr. Winters, and before I left, we had Ron Wimmer. And we had a very supportive community. We were in the throes of the biggest growth in Olathe's history. And we were building a school a year, if you want to take the average out. So over a period of about this 20-some years, we were very busy. And I don't think any board member could take individual credit. I'm seeing Steve sit back there. Are there any other board members who were on when I was on here? Well, Steve, you might as well stand up.
I don't know if I can.
He said when I came in, he was like, geez, somebody else's hair is white as his. But the board worked together. We, as I said, we had wonderful support from the community. And our goal was to have one of the best school districts or the best school district in the state and to take care of all of these precious children that we had. And thank you so much for coming tonight, giving me this recognition, and I'll try to keep from crying.
I want to say, really, thank you, Scotty. In the audience tonight are family and friends, but she has a special person that calls you Gigi, who is here. Her great-granddaughter is here, so thank you, Ruth Ann, for giving dedication. Thank you.
She calls me Gigi. And she just turned two years old, seventeen.
Okay, right, right here. One, two, three.
And before I do, please, I might go over to my family, do a little stand-up.
Thank you. All right, our next recognition, I'd like to welcome to the front representatives from Johnson County Parks and Recreation, including Executive Director Jeff Stewart, Rob Nosman, Charity Coker, Moreno Grady, and Jill Leach, the whole, the whole club, come on up. Johnson County Parks and Recreation has a mission to enrich the Johnson County community through excellence in parks, recreation, culture, and public service. Tonight, we are pleased to highlight the programs that are provided to support our students, staff, and families in the Olathe Public Schools. Parks such as Ernie Miller Park and Nature Center in Olathe provide youth education and camp programs tied to our curriculum goals. Fine art students have been connected to the public arts programs through visual arts programs, theater-in-the-park performances, and educational outreach field trips, as well as our Leadership Club bike displays at the Johnson County Heritage Center. Students have the opportunity to maintain health and wellness through the county's youth sports programs, and JCPRD also supports our golf teams who utilize Heritage Golf Course. They have consistently supported the Olathe Public Schools Foundation by sponsorship at events and donating to the Taste of the Town. We are also honored to highlight the dedicated support of the Children's Services Division of JCPRD. Their staff attended the district's learning sessions during the exploration of bell schedule changes. To meet the needs of our patrons, JCPRD out-of-school-time programs pivoted to meet parent and staff needs. JCPRD offers programming at all 36 elementary schools and supporting our families facing extreme economic challenges. JCPRD has worked with the McKenney-Bento families to waive enrollment fees. In addition, there are scholarships available through community development block grant funds for qualifying families. In collaboration with JCPRD, Olathe Public Schools was excited to provide childcare for certified staff members' school-aged children during professional development days. This is the second year of support for our dedicated staff. This supported staff with students aged kindergarten through 12 years old at no cost for a total of seven dates. As you can see, there are countless ways that JCPRD supports our district, schools, and students, and we are so proud to recognize you all tonight. Thank you. Okay, and to round out our recognitions tonight, I would like to welcome to the front our high school seniors who have been named National Merit semifinalists, along with Olathe East Principal Carrie Lane, Olathe Northwest Principal Chris Zook, Olathe South Principal Sean Demery, and Olathe West Principal Jay Novacek. Come on up. The National Merit Scholarship Corporation has announced the names of approximately 16,000 semifinalists for the 70th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. And in the Olathe Public Schools, we are proud to have 12 seniors who were named National Merit semifinalists. These extraordinary seniors have achieved this distinguished honors through their outstanding performance on the preliminary SAT test. Becoming a National Merit semifinalist is a remarkable accomplishment. These students are among the top academic performers, with less than 1% of high school seniors nationwide achieving this honor. As I call your name, please step forward. Olathe East High School Wesley Jansen. Olathe Northwest High School Connor Chafin, Ava Evans, Easton Garcia, Eugenie Kim, Alexander Panyer, Brayden Pickard, Elijah Tamanu, and Micah Augustine. Olathe South High School Cody Schwint, and Olathe West High School Adrick Smith and Ethan Wolf. These students have the opportunity to advance to the finalist level, and in February, they will be notified of this designation. These academically talented high school seniors have an opportunity to continue in the competition for more than 7,000 National Merit Scholarships, worth nearly 28 million that will be offered next spring. In addition, about 160 colleges and universities are expected to finance some 3,800 college-sponsored merit scholarship awards for finalists who will attend the sponsored institution. Congratulations. Please join me in a round of applause. All right, I'm not going to dismiss you just yet. When you guys leave for the evening, Erin wants to take a group photo out in the hallway for our news magazine, so don't run away. She's going to get a group photo of you all out there. Thank you, guys.
Congratulations from the board, students as well, and parents. As we transition and before we have our school presentation tonight, I do want to thank Dr. Jim McMullin, Deputy Superintendent of Organizational Operations, for being on the dais with us tonight. Dr. Yeager couldn't be here this evening, so thank you. And Jim, remember, we are live on TV.
This chair's a little warm over here, so appreciate you having me.
So our school presentation tonight is Meadow Lane Elementary, Mr. Casey Welch, Principal. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Dr. McMullin, Mrs. Beam, and all the board members for allowing me the opportunity to share the wonderful students, staff, and community that we have that make Meadow Lane exceptional and, in my opinion, the best elementary school that there is. I also want to take a minute to acknowledge our fifth-grade student government officers who led the Pledge of Allegiance for us tonight. That is Evie Wardle, President, Caitlin Holton, Vice President, and Will Dawson, Secretary. They help run a fantastic student government made up of also 26 reps, three from each classes in grades three through five. I want to share a little bit of history about Meadow Lane. Meadow Lane School District, number 108, was formed on July 12, 1951, when the former Prairie Star and Cherry Lane Schools merged with three districts, Grandview, Bethel, and Twin Springs, which had already been consolidated in 1949. The building was completed in the late summer of 1953, consisting of three classrooms, a multipurpose room, an office, a health room, and a kitchen. Students started attending classes for the fall term, September 24 in 1953. Since opening, Meadow Lane has gone through five additions, with the latest in 2005, consisting of the East Edition, which is the new main entrance, the lobby, the restroom, administrative offices, and the new NPR. So here in our 71st year, we're still trucking along and doing great things. There will be five areas that I'll be highlighting tonight. Students and staff, clubs and programs, academics, PBIS, and our parent and community involvement. To begin with, our students, we have two grade levels with two sections. Those are the ones highlighted here on the yellow table. And all other grade levels have three sections, giving us a total of 344 students, which 182 students are male and 162 students are female. Our students at Meadow Lane are absolutely phenomenal, and they are a reminder of why we chose this profession. Daily, they are working to not only learn and grow academically, but also to strive to be the best individuals that they can be. With our staff, we have 47 and a half staff members that we are blessed to have employed at Meadow Lane. They put so much love and effort every day into planning for their classes, making sure that not only is the class learning as a group, but also concentrating on the needs of each individual student. Teachers look at data to see what students need intervention, giving them what they need during our daily all-school intervention time to help them grow and master each skill. This is a school-wide effort, as our specials teachers, our resource teachers, our paras, our TPPs, all work with classroom teachers to run intervention groups to achieve this. They also strive to collaborate with each other frequently to see how they can reflect and improve on their own practices, but also help their coworkers. This is probably one reason our students and staff, that we have such a tremendous retention rate, where we have staff of full experience, and we are blessed that they choose to be Mustangs year after year. Right now, amongst our entire staff, we have a total of 347 years just of experience at Meadow Lane. Meadow Lane is fortunate to have such great employees that consider us their home. 16 of our staff have been here 15 years or more. A special shout-out to our staff member with the most years at Meadow Lane, and that is our kindergarten teacher, Ms. Michelle Williams, with 35 years in teaching, with 34 of those years at Meadow Lane. With our clubs and programs, we do have a lot of clubs and programs, and we are very fortunate for that at Meadow Lane. Our teachers are very involved with providing opportunities for students to be able to get involved in many different activities before school, during school, and after school. These clubs and programs help to promote academic success, giving back to the community, literacy advocacy, student leadership, and more. Our librarian, Jennifer Howey, has also worked diligently in setting up a one-book-one-school reading program that will be starting this January, where each family and each staff member will receive a book, Dogtown, where we can all follow a reading schedule, experiencing the power of literacy together as a community. Tonight, we have three fourth-grade students that also participate in MathWings. They recently took first place at regionals and second place at districts. Please give a round of applause for Arav Medaya, Emmanuel Matthew, and Madam Schamberger. I would ask for those three to come up here now as they have prepared speeches on what it means to be a Mustang.
Hi, my name is Madam Schamberger, and I'm a fourth grader at Meadow Lane Elementary. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight and tell you what it means to be a Mustang. Mustangs are kind and include others. We have a lunch bunch group with current students and new kids so that they get the chance to make new friends. Mustangs make good choices and do the right thing. We earn Mustang money when teachers see us follow the rules. You can cash in your money for cool items, such as cutting off Mr. Welch's tie. Mustangs take care of their community and others by donating canned foods to help those in need. We also have a community service club that kids can be involved in to do volunteer work outside of school. I am proud to be a student at Meadow Lane Elementary and grateful for all the amazing teachers and staff that we have. Once a Mustang, always a Mustang.
Hello, my name is Emmanuel Matthew at Meadow Lane. At Meadow Lane, being a Mustang means committing to respect, being inclusive, and treating others as you would like to be treated. Think about how I would feel if you faced unfair treatment. At Meadow Lane, we consistently embrace these three principles, making a welcoming and kind environment for everyone. That is why I take pride in being a Mustang. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Arav Medaya. I am proud to be a Meadow Lane Mustang because of all the teachers and students who support each other. I really like that we get opportunities like MathWings, student government, and lots of other stuff. I like to be here today to represent Meadow Lane and say how we treat each other. We treat each other well, and we feel proud that we won MathWings through the support of our teachers. I feel proud to be a Mustang every day. Once a Mustang, always a Mustang. Go Meadow Lane Mustangs.
Well done, well done. I have to give a shout-out to Madam real quick. One of my favorite parts of the week is on Fridays. We get to have Student of the Week lunches, so those students that are picked for those get a certificate, they get a pencil. We take their pictures right before each lunch, in front of the Meadow Lane sign. That gets posted up on a board in the hallway so all the students can see. And I get to sit for a little, about two hours, and I get to eat lunch with all the students as they rotate through there in the hallway at a table so the students can see me as we're passing. And as we were talking about some of the incentives for this year, some things we need to change up, Madam gave me a great idea, and that put it in my head, and I ended up researching, and we ended up getting a Meadow Lane PBIS championship wrestling belt that the students can now get and wear. So I had it first on the incentives, but I think I'm going to change it to something that, you know, we can get free for every week so students can get more of that. So I have to give that, that goes to you, buddy. That was your idea. All right, so we're also going to talk about academics. We are so proud of the academic progress that our students continue to show at Meadow Lane. Meadow Lane students continue to score above the state and district levels on the state assessment in grades three through five. This achievement is a result of the dedications of the students themselves to their own learning, the drive of the teachers to teach each individual student needs, allowing growth, and the partnership of our parents and community to reinforce those at home. We are into our second full year of PBIS, and we are having tremendous success with our program after Tier One, and will begin to implement Tier Two very soon. Every day, we remind students to follow our three expectations, that we are respectful, we are safe, and we are engaged. Mr. Graham, our counselor, Ms. Keely, our PE teacher, other staff and students- other staff and students, meet a great video about Meadow Lane Elementary PBIS Expectations.
So what it means to use respectful at assemblies is make sure you're keeping your volume down when the speakers are talking and not screaming, just clapping, and then whenever they put their hand up. So you put it up and then you stop talking.
And also, you remember what they're there for. Like, if they're there for Veterans Day, you might not want to be as loud, but if they're there to teach us pickleball, you can be a little louder.
And please sit down respectfully, and if you're on the bleachers, please do not kick on them or stomp on them.
What it means to be safe at assemblies is like, respect people's space. Like, don't like, try to go into their space and touch them.
So if you find anything unsafe at an assembly, please let a teacher know.
What it means to be engaged at the assembly is to use the restroom before you go into the assembly.
And if someone's trying to get your attention to quiet down, make sure to quiet down the first time so he can get along with the assembly.
And we're there for reasons to respect the speaker.
I've had so many connections with my coworkers and kids throughout all the years, many videos that I've talked. So thank you.
On the Educator Excellence Award. This video is about 8 minutes and 35 seconds, so I won't make you watch the whole thing, so I'm going to go to the end here. It's a fantastic video, though. They did a great job.
We are safe.
We are respectful.
We are engaged.
We are helpful.
We are brilliant.
We are inclusive.
We are radiant.
We are caring.
We are inspired.
We are mighty.
Alright, so like I said, that is a great video they put together. We show that to our kids every year. We started last year at the end of the year, and we use that whenever we go over PBIS Expectations. It's really great for the students to be able to see from the own students going through all that expectation matrix of how we should behave, what we should do, and what the expectations are. With our parent and community involvement is a very strong piece that we really feel very fortunate at. Our PTO puts on a Jog-a-thon. It's our annual fundraiser every year. We raised $27,000 this year. I did let the students know that if they raise that amount, each grade level could pick, and we actually went over our amount, which was 25. If they got the amount, then they could all pie me in the face. So I took several pies in the face that day during our assembly. I learned very quickly goggles are probably your friend, and they very quickly learn that if they wedge up, they can get it in your nostril. So I don't blame them. I would have probably done it to my principal. But they raised $27,000 this year, and that pays for field trip costs, for teacher support, buses, family events, our 5th grade farewell celebration, student clubs, and more. So our parents are extremely involved, and we couldn't do what we do without them. So they're really the cornerstone of our school. They also sponsor skate nights, restaurant nights, sound equipment whenever we need help with that. They have agreed to buy new wet area furniture, so we'd increase what we do in those wet areas so that we can use those as actual learning opportunities. Our outdoor classroom that was donated and paid by them. Playground equipment before we got our new playground, but they did reach in there and they did a lot for our school on that as well. We always have our annual phone party, which is this picture right here, to kick off the start of the school year. The students love it. We tell them, "Wear clothes that you don't mind getting stained." Last year, we used white. This year, we went with a stained blue, and we all got to go home looking like Smurfs that night. It did wash out, so we're all good, clothes and ourselves. But it's always a great time to kick off the school year. We also have JCPURD program with us. Koma across the street was Taekwondo. They come to our Field Day every year. They have a station where they promote exercise and movement through Taekwondo. A lot of our students are students over there as well, and they are very instrumental in helping out in our community in other aspects when we need them. We just met recently with Honeywell Aerospace Technologies, who help foster a love for STEM, and they want to do this in students to maintain an interest and provide course and career guidance through not only elementary into their middle school years and help high school students identify clear pathways from education into industry. So they are going to be joining us at some of our events. We're looking at doing a science fair possibly, where they will come and help with the students on our different education celebrations that we have in the spring. They're looking at coming and trying to support us in any way possible as that as well. So we're looking very much forward to that partnership. But I say our parents, they are just fantastic. They run many of our clubs and activities, and they show up to volunteer whenever we need them. Our parents run our chess club. We have no problem getting room, parents to help come in, and most of the time, I have to let them know, "Hold on, you can come in a little bit," because they're so eager to get in that door and help decorate or do anything for the school. Our mystery readers. I actually got firsthand experience of this the other day. I was able to go in and I was subbing for one of our 1st grade classrooms. We had one of our student's dad come in to be the mystery reader, and our students were very excited to walk me through step by step by step. "This is how mystery reader works, Mr. Welch. He's got to sit right here. We sit here. We're quiet. Here's the button you push if you need them to be quiet." It was fantastic. But I love our parents. They're always in there, ready to just come and volunteer and help out. They help run our Scouts. They run our Spirit Squad every morning. Our school carnival. I'm sure I'm missing some things here, but we have got parents back here that I just can't thank them enough for everything they've done for us and for making, you know, my time here at Meadow Lane, being inviting, just welcoming me in, as this is my 2nd year. And I just feel like I'm just blessed to be a part of what they've been given. I want to thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to speak here tonight and brag on a wonderful school where I get to serve every day. I appreciate you. I appreciate the community. I appreciate the parents and the students. And I hope you have a wonderful night, and remember, it's always a great day to be a Mustang.
Mr. Welch, thank you for being here. Young men, congratulations on your MathWings success and your presentations tonight. And just a special comment to Madden, who I get to see on the soccer pitch on a pretty regular basis, so it's fun to see you here tonight, too. Thank you. Board, did you have any comments or questions? Alright, thank you.
I'm sorry. He needs to confess. Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, Will. Go.
The only question I had, could you send the link for the full video to us? I'd kind of like to see it at some point.
Absolutely, yeah. No problem.
Okay, thanks.
Our next presentation is related to American Education Week, and we have some representatives, our president of our ONEA organization, and some other staff. Ms. Angie Powers.
Hi, I'm Kim Davis. I am a jumpstart teacher at Rolling Ridge Elementary, and I'm going to do a little bit of this, and then I have my help from my other wonderful representatives here. The National Education Association was one of the creators and original sponsors of American Education Week. Distressed that 25% of the country's World War I draftees were illiterate and 9% were physically unfit, representatives of NEA and the American Legion met in 1919 to seek ways to generate public support for education. Both, the conventions of both organizations subsequently adopted resolutions of support for a national effort to raise public awareness of the importance of education. In 1921, the NEA Representative Assembly in Des Moines, Iowa, called for a designation of 1 week each year to spotlight education. In its resolution, NEA called for an Educational Week, observed in all communities annually for the purpose of informing the public of accomplishments and needs of the public schools and to secure the cooperation and support of the public in meeting those needs. The first observance of American Education Week occurred December 4 through 10, 1921, with the NEA and the American Legion as the sponsors. A year later, the then U.S. Office of Education joined the effort as a co-sponsor, and the PTA followed in 1938. Today, over 10 national organizations sponsor American Education Week, and you can see these on our slide. When discussing American Education Week, it's important that we recognize that the Olatha School District plays a vital role in our community. The Olatha School District was formed by the consolidation of 4, oh, I'm sorry, 5 smaller districts, including Countryside, Meadow Lane that we just heard from, Mount Zion, Olatha, and Pleasant View, with schools from the 1860s. We've opened and renovated many buildings since that time. This year, we even reopened a building, Santa Fe Trail, originally constructed in 1968. Across the country, schools will celebrate excellence in education by hosting kickoff events and activities. We encourage schools in our very own Olatha District to join in this celebration. And today, we're going to share a few examples of what you can do as an educator or community member for each day of the American Education Week. So we have all kinds of different ideas. We can ask students, "What would you do if you were the school principal?" It's especially fun to ask 4-year-olds about that. Express appreciation for the education workers. Nothing touches my heart more than something from a student or a family via email or an actual personal note. Those mean the most to me. And I think encouraging our families to do the same is always nice. Tuesday is Family Day. On this day, schools across the nation, we invite parents and caring adults into the classroom to experience what it's like to be a child. Ongoing research shows that parental involvement and family support in schools improves student achievement, reduces absenteeism, and restores confidence in public education. Family support means reading to your children, checking homework every night, and limiting TV viewing or screen time on school nights. Developing a relationship with your child's teacher, and simply asking children about their school day. Whatever your level of involvement, it's important to be consistent in order to make a difference in your child's lives. I love following up about books and asking students about their favorite books and sharing the books that we read in our class with parents. I invite you to read the creepy books. Creepy Crayon, Creepy Underwear, and Creepy Carrots. Those are very hilarious, and the kids cannot get enough of them. And we love, we've been sharing them in our classroom this year, and parents have reached out to tell me that their children are getting them at the library, which makes my heart happy. So I think that's a really great way to bring school and home together. I'm going to pass the mic.
Hello, I'm Amber Grant. I am a parent educator at Olatha South High School. And Education Support Professionals Day was first celebrated in 1987 after NEA's Representative Assembly, the association's decision-making body of nearly 8,000 member delegates, called on the organization to honor the contributions of all school support staff. National ESP Day is observed on the Wednesday of American Education Week. Our classified staff does everything from feeding our students to ensuring they have a clean environment, to making sure that their devices work. Our schools would simply not run without them. We shared a few ideas that the schools could do during this day, including hosting an appreciation gift, arranging food or gift deliveries, or like Kim said, my favorite is encouraging the teachers, students, and even the parents to hand-deliver, mail, or email thank-you letters to our ESPs. That's always my favorite, to get the little handwritten notes from the students. I love it.
Hi, goodnight. My name is Manuel Natsu. I'm going to talk about the Educator for a Day. Educator for a Day is an opportunity for community members to experience the day as educators and experience the joy and the challenge for working in public education. We invite community members into our school to help meet the needs of a student with the guidance of a school employee. Educators invite families into your learning space. Community members read to students, talk about your career, or share other educational information. Students dress as your favorite educator. Thank you.
My name is Mike Sanbothy. I'm an itinerant substitute teacher in the district, so I work in all the school buildings. Friday, November 22 is Subeducator Day. Substitute educators play a vital role in the maintenance and continuity of daily education. Substitute Educator Day is a result of a member's advocacy at the 2003 NEA Representative Assembly, which called for an increased appreciation of school substitute employees. These professional educators provide a critical link in the education of public schoolchildren by serving as a bridge to provide continued quality education to children in the temporary absence of regular classroom educators. Time off is crucial for teachers to provide the best education for students on days of professional development, medical and mental health, and responsibilities outside of school. Great substitutes make this possible. Some ideas for your schools would be to arrange a school-wide recognition of substitute educators in the Read Aloud School Bulletin or on the intercom, or you could write a note of appreciation to a sub who goes above and beyond.
Thank you so much for letting us share about American Education Week.
Claire.
I just wanted to say it is really wonderful to see the collaboration of classified and certified staff on that recognition and to point out how so many different professionals contribute to the school days of our children. So thank you to all of you who came and spoke this evening. Thank you for highlighting the various ways you can be an employee and a valued employee in our district. And I am very much looking forward to doing my part to participate in this wonderful celebration of this bedrock institution of our community. So thank you so much.
I would also extend my thanks to all of you here this evening. And just curious, will these suggestions be on social media? I expected that. Great, great. Thank you all for being here this evening. Our last presentation is related to the new Operations Service Center and Career Tech Ed Center. Mr. Pelangi.
Good evening. It's always great to follow students and staff and be the last one in the presentation of the evening. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to provide you with an update tonight on our new project that we're currently under construction for our current Technical Education Center and our Operations Service Center. And I'd be remiss if I, again, didn't thank the community for their support of the bond issue that is a driving force for this project, that it's going to benefit students, staff, and the community after we're all done with the project. So the first photo tonight is what you see is the current state of construction. This aerial photo was taken on 10/124. And what you see at the upper left-hand corner is the existing Linnenwood Building. And it consisted originally of the north and south buildings being constructed in the 60s. And then in the 1970s, they infilled the middle of it. That current building is what we're renovating for our current Technical Education Center. And then, as you move your way a little bit further to the right on that photo, you see a link, and then our addition that we're building that is going to be our Operations Service Center and also house our Construction Trades Program from our CT programs. Right now, in our existing facility that we're renovating, that will house our CT programs, we're currently... our CTE programs, we're currently installing our exterior brick around the perimeter of the building, so if you drive by, you'll be able to see that firsthand behind the fence. Inside our buildings, we talk about areas. So, when I talk about areas A, B, and C, it starts from the south and works its way to the north. So, from what you see on the aerial up there, Area A would be the area on the left, the center of the building is Area B, and the area to the north is Area C. Currently, right now, in Areas A and B, which would be the south and middle portion of the building, we are installing drywall and finishing up our mechanical, electrical, and plumbing rough-in. And our lower level, we're installing our metal studs and framing, and then also starting our overhead rough-in, and then on the very, we're also starting painting as well, which is a really good progress for us to make at this time. So, upcoming additional painting, more drywall and flooring that'll take place over the next month as we continue to work our way from the south to the north in the building. For our building addition, for our CTE program, Construction Trades, and the Service Center, we are going to be finishing our cast-in-place exterior wall panels that were made out of concrete and poured in place. We have just about two panels left to finish. If you drive by, it went up in literally like seven days. It was pretty amazing to see that process happen. We are starting structural components of that addition, so we're installing our steel columns, steel beams, our steel joists, and then that activity is going to take place for a while, so you'll see a crane on site for the next month, month and a half as we install all those, and then we'll start putting a roof on it and start working inside the building as well. This is a photo of the exterior wall construction on the existing building. As you can see, we're installing some exterior concrete pads, so you see some footings being worked on. You see the exterior brick going up. We've installed new windows, and it's progressing nicely. The original schedule for the project was to finish in time for an August of 2025 opening. But with the current state of construction that we're in right now, we are going to be opening the building during the '25-'26 school year, and for a variety of reasons, we've had some schedule impacts. So, when you do an adaptive reuse of a building that is in the 1960s or 1970s, we've run into some challenges that we're working through. A lot of it, we try to plan ahead and know what we're looking to get into, but until you start to do complete demolition inside the building and start opening things up, there's some things that have popped up that have been a schedule impact for us. So, the first major one was at the southwest corner of our existing building. We knew we had some settlement issues that we were going to deal with, but we didn't know the true extent of it until we actually got to open everything up. And then, we had our geotechnical engineer be able to go in and evaluate that corner of the building, and their recommendation was to install piers at that corner of the building. So, we installed piers on the inside and the outside to stabilize that corner, and it was a result of some three large oak trees that were in that area that had desecrated the soils in that area. Also, along that impact, we completely rebuilt the exterior concrete masonry units at that corner of the building. We had saw enough damage that was caused by that settlement that we made the decision, and with the board's approval, we were able to tear all that down and rebuild that back up. So, almost a kind of a brand-new building that's taking place at that corner of the building. We replaced all the existing sanitary sewer lines in the building. When the existing building was occupied at the time, everything was working fine. We were able to do some preliminary investigation, and we thought everything was okay, but then, once we were able to demo everything out and really get a true inspection of everything was there, we saw some issues that we thought that was going to take place a little bit further down the road, and the decision was made that while we're in there and we have everything taken out, let's just go ahead and just remove it all, put it all in. We want to be a long-term building owner and have this be in our position for a long time. The decision was made to replace all that. So, that took a little while, as we had to saw-cut all the existing floor slab out of the building, dig down, get to the pipe, and put everything brand-new back in, and that work has been completed. We removed and replaced all the existing parapet walls around the building. The parapet wall is the wall that is above the roof joist and kind of hides the roofing, so to speak. After, we knew we were going to replace the roof, we knew that we were going to have to do some additional reinforcing of that wall because our roof is going to be thicker to meet all the new energy codes that are there. After we took the existing roof off, we noticed that there wasn't any structural components to that wall above the roof joist. You could literally walk over to the edge and push it over. So, as, again, a long-term building owner, when you make sure the building was structurally sound, we made the decision to replace all of it. So, around the whole perimeter of that building, we built all new walls to build to support the new roof and the decking and everything, the mechanical components that are up there, and that's, that works, it's all been done as well. We fixed all the existing interior concrete masonry openings that were scheduled to remain. So, in between each of the three buildings that were constructed, there's a concrete wall that goes through there that divides each of those areas that were built previously, and we were going to, we are keeping some of the existing openings that were there, but after we tore off all of the existing walls and drywall, that, we had some components in there that needed to get rebuilt. So, working with our structural engineers, we were able to completely fix those and make those structurally sound, and that work is complete as well. And then, we had planned to keep the existing elevator shaft that was in the building, and after working with our elevator company on being able to salvage that, we thought we could. But after we took the existing elevator out, we realized that that square was not square for the new elevator, so the decision was made to tear down the existing elevator shaft and rebuild it from scratch, and we're in the process of doing that right now and working with our elevator company to make sure that's done correctly. So, when we have the elevator in there, it'll work. So, where does that get us today with all of the challenges and issues that we've had? I just mentioned five of the most, largest ones we've had. We've had some others that have come to light, and those have been presented in change orders that the board has approved. But current substantial completion right now on the project is scheduled for mid-July, and it was originally scheduled for mid-April. So, what does that mean when I say that it's substantially complete? So, what that means is that the district can occupy the building, all life safety measures are in place, and we've received our temporary certificate of occupancy from the City of Olathe to occupy the building. Then, that sets off another set of tasks that we have to do as a district. So, the first thing is working with Mr. Umfree and his group to get in there with all of our technology. We are building servers, we're building our, just the infrastructure for all the components for the classrooms, whether it's the audiovisual, Wi-Fi access points, our card readers, our cameras, to make sure that we now secure the facility from a district's point of view. And then, that gives us an opportunity to start installing our furniture fixture and equipment of the building. So, we are moving in a lot of existing pieces from the various departments and programs that are moving into this building, but we're also providing new as well because we are growing those programs. So, when we reach that temporary certificate of occupancy time, we're able to start move-ins and build our workstations that the staff will use and being able to get the offices set up and make sure that we have the admin staff ready for available, so when we start to move over the programs, we can do it in a safe manner. So, wouldn't be a progress presentation if I didn't have some nice photos of the construction site. So, currently, behind the fence, as I like to call it, this photo is of our Operations Service Center addition, and those are the cast-in-place concrete walls that are going up, and then the kind of look inside of that corner, that's our new warehouse facility. This photo is of the Construction Trades Program that's going to be in the addition as well, and they're going to have a storage mezzanine, so they're starting to build that up there so they can store all their stuff up top and have all this open floor space so they can start to construct and bring in mechanical units and work on their various curriculums. And then, of course, we have the office area for the Service Center, Operations Service Center, so that's getting worked on as well. As we work around the building, the existing building of the Linnenwood, we're, again, installing our brick. This is the north half of the existing building where we're installing our metal studs and rough-in. The northwest corner of the building that you can see from I-35, again, we're installing our air and moisture barrier that goes behind our brick and our exterior veneer. This is the southwest corner of the building for the new Health Skills Lab. That'll be part of the Health Science Program for CTE. We're installing drywall, we're mudding and sanding and installing the first coat of So, what is the next steps that we're going to take? So, the first one that's being presented to you tonight is the naming of the facility. So, we wanted to make sure that we had an identifiable name for the campus, and what we're presenting tonight is naming the project, the Olathe Public Schools Innovation Campus. Second, Dr. McMull and I are starting to work with staff on a phased move-in, so we're engaging with the various stakeholders of the building to determine if they, what type, what time of the year do they, they think they can move in and do it without losing contact time with students and being able to, be able to move at a time that's good for them. Fortunately, all these programs are already in a location now, so it's not like a new building where we've got students coming and we've got to get them in as soon as possible. But we want to make sure if we're going to move them in, we want to do it right the first time. We're going to continue to work with our construction management team to find ways to improve on that project schedule. If we can gain a week, if we can gain a month, we'll take it. We have a lot of workers out there right now, but we're not going to increase the efficiency of the project at the result of quality as well. We want to make sure the quality is done right. So, that's that fine balance that we're working on right now to see if we can gain any efficiencies but not lose quality. And then, we're going to start to work with the stakeholders in the program and district staff on the additional furniture fixture and equipment needs for the building, and that's a future action item that's been presented to you tonight, and that's a process we go through on any new project. It's the same as what we did for Santa Fe Trail, where we start to work at, you know, how are we going to set up a classroom and the student desks and chairs, and does the science, or does the health department need additional medical beds, which they will because we're going to grow in the program? Those are some of the items that we're going to be talking about with all the various So, with that, that is our current state of construction on the CTE and OSCE project.
Thank you. Board, any questions, comments?
Travis, since we're board members, does that mean we can just show up and drive the crane?
You are, yes.
Be careful how you answer that. I think it looks great.
Travis, that answer's no.
Let me talk to the insurance company. It looks great. I think it's, obviously, there's unexpected delays that will occur with that. I don't envy you guys having to handle the schedules of moving the programs in mid-year, but I'm sure you guys will be able to figure it out, so great job.
Thank you for being so proactive on some of the things that you found to go ahead and repair them or redo or rebuild while you have access to it too, that is. While you're there, could you give us just a little status on Santa Fe Trail? I know the original building, I drive by there regularly, is slowly going away, but kind of the timeline for the track and the football field?
Sure. Right now, we're about 80% complete of demolition of the existing building. The current plan is to finish that up probably here in the next couple of weeks, and then as soon as that's done, we're going to start grading the site. So, a lot of the existing dirt that you see, the big little mounds out there, we saved them for a reason, so we can backfill our new track that's there. Currently, right now, the plan is to have the track in place probably in mid to late winter. The driving factor on completing that is the top coat urethane that's going to go on the track. It's temperature-sensitive, so we probably won't be able to install that until it kind of warms up a little bit more after that, but being able to get everything else done, the track, we're going to be growing our own grass, so we're going to be starting that process as well from the Service Center point of view. We'll be building the track storage building, we'll be going on there. So, the tentative plan is we're looking like probably around March.
Great, great. Thank you.
At each regular meeting, the Board of Education reserves limited time for individuals to address the board. We ask that your comments be germane that is related to the business this board effectuates. Noncompliance may result in the president interrupting to redirect. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to three minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the three-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the board and not the guests or staff. If a response is appropriate, the president will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Audience disruption is also not permitted. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audiotape recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room and state your name, city and state, and your relationship to the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Steele. Our first speaker tonight is Melissa Wagner.
Hi, my name is Melissa Wagner. I live in Olathe, and my son is in the autism room at Arbor Creek Elementary School. I wanted to share a little bit about myself so the board can understand my character. I am a nurse. For the last nine years, I have been advocating for my patients and ensuring their safety. I am also an Army veteran. I proudly served my country for eight years and was willing to lay my life on the line to protect it. Last but not least, and most importantly, I am a mom, not just any mom, but an autism mom. I am constantly advocating for my son and navigating the challenges of having a child with a disability. I spoke last month requesting for a fence to be placed around the playground at Arbor Creek. The autism program at Arbor Creek is a Level III placement, meaning that the most severe autistic children attend this school, and the majority of these students are nonverbal and share the common trait of elopement. I had mentioned several safety concerns and how I feel our autistic students are being denied free, appropriate public education. I spoke at the city council meeting last month as well, expressing my concerns for no fencing around the playground. I discussed how the new 305 housing development that neighbors Arbor Creek is being built. There's going to be a new access road added, which will drastically increase traffic. Natural barriers are going to be removed, widely exposing two ponds, of which one of the ponds is only a block away from the school. And I'd like to remind the board that the number-one cause of death in autistic children is drowning. To my surprise, after the meeting, several council members approached me and expressed genuine interest in my request. They seem to understand the safety risks, potential liability, and possible civil rights being denied. I have been in contact with one council member since the meeting, and the latest update I received was that requesting for a fence at Arbor Creek is an equity issue, meaning what we have to do for one school, we have to be prepared to do for all. On Sunday, I drove to 36 elementary schools in the district, which took about three hours, and I documented that 14 out of the 36 schools have no fence, or 39%, and the other 22 schools, or 61%, have at least a full or partial fence around the playground. Not all schools have a Level III autism placement program. If we are going to group the most severe elementary autistic students in one school, then we need to have proper safety measures in place to ensure they have equal access to everything their neurotypical peers do. Our severely autistic students should be able to play freely at recess and not have to be within arm's length of an adult. I understand that our severely autistic students are a small subset of the school. However, shouldn't we protect our most vulnerable students? Our Olathe schools should ensure the safety of all students. This mother of a nonverbal autistic student will continue to use my voice to ensure it. Thank you for hearing me.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Megan Bricks, and I am the Elementary General Music Teacher at Forest View. I absolutely love working for Olathe Public Schools. Tonight, I want- Tonight, I want to uplift the work of our community and district volunteers who give their time in our buildings and school sites to support our students day in and day out. This school year feels extremely different as we have begun to adjust to our changes at our varying levels, but for me specifically at the elementary level. The start time change shifting 20 minutes later has had impacts on our students and how their school days begin. The 20 minutes removed from our academic school day has adjusted how educators are able to get all of their teaching accomplished within a day, while also meeting the emotional and mental needs for all of our students. Throughout each day, educators and staff members are doing everything they possibly can to provide the best education to the students in their classrooms. But as we all know, there's just never enough of us or never enough time to give it to our students. Thus enter our fantastic volunteers to provide us the extra support that we need. Whether it is a family member of students in a specific building, district volunteers and community members that give us their time to provide extra support to our students. That could include working with a small group of students, hanging artwork, assisting with the school's PBIS reward system, helping supervise in the lunchroom, sitting with a student and just listening to them read, or even eating lunch with a student to build relationships. I know that I have my own specific lens of what I have experienced in my teaching career, but I know that what I experience day in and day out is occurring at all of our buildings and all of our learning sites across the district. I want to truly thank anyone who is listening and watching, who has spent any amount of time in one of our buildings. Your support doesn't go unnoticed. I would encourage family members who are watching to reach out to their child's building to ask how they can support, both in the building as well as prep that you could do at home. There's so much that you could do to support us from your own home and not even having to step into our buildings. Thank you from the bottom of my heart, as an educator in this school district, for our community members who support our students each and every day and support our staff. I also want to thank our Board of Education for putting our students and staff first in the decisions that you make that impact our daily lives. I hope that you truly know how thankful we, as educators in this school district right now, are to have you all sitting here in front of us and serving in your role as a member of our Board of Education. I couldn't have asked for anyone better to be sitting in front of me. Thank you.
Thank you. Kaylin Campaign.
Hello, I'm a mother of an autistic student and our goal is for Aiden to be back in school full-time because we know access to learning with peers is going to help him reach his full potential and be a productive community member. I would like the board to consider a review of a policy KG2. It has not been revised since December 5th of 2002, and the last time it was reviewed was in 2010. This policy prevents outside services from working with students within the school setting. Attendance is a priority to success in academics to the Olathe School District. Short staffing for the SPED department and para support is an obstacle nationwide, but other districts are accepting the support of outside services to help meet the need of autistic students. We have access to an ABA team that supports daily living skills in the morning and afternoon in our home environment, but they also have been able to support and be an extra hand in the schools of Lawrence and Manhattan and ask why not Olathe? We wrestle with our son going to school full-time because it prevents him access to Medicaid services of direct support. He has access to 40 hours a week of autistic-specific services. Research shows placing an autistic learner in an intensive structured education program allows rewiring of the neuronal networks in the young plastic brain. Incorporating ABA-based therapy into all learning experiences will optimize skill acquisition and diminish negative behavior. We must listen to the needs of para educators and partner with outside resources accessible through Medicaid that are willing to train and offer direct instruction to support autistic students in the gen ed setting. According to our OPS 2023 Special Services Study, 24% of the SPED teachers said they are not equipped with skills to deal with behaviors like elopement. It was also reported in the study that para availability limits SPED support, especially inclusion. Private BCBA's are able to support students within the gen ed environment and help reduce behaviors that disrupt peer learning. I have really valued that Olathe allows parents and grandparents within the community to volunteer and substitute to help fill in the need for our schools. I hope we continue to lean on our community and utilize trained specialists that are already established and eager to help our students access the gen ed environment safely. Opening our door to outside resources provides a hand to gen ed teachers and para educators. They are knowledgeable in the child-specific need and are qualified to offer hands-on training to the gen ed staff on how to meet the students' needs. We had access to BCBA support when Aiden was in a private preschool. They stood back, observed what was challenging about the environment, and developed accommodations and modifications for the team. They helped promote conversation and positive interaction with peers. They modeled how peers could engage Aiden and provide solutions for breakdowns noticed at school. BCBA's are able to take data and bridge the gap between gen ed and SPED. Support from experts within our community can ensure progress and generalization throughout multiple settings. Thank you.
Thank you. Cameron Driveen.
Hi, my name's Cameron and I'm a student at Olathe North High School. I'm here tonight because of concerns and frustrations that I, as well as many of my peers, have with the school computers. The school computers have many websites blocked and with good intention because it, the idea is that it will help students to stay focused at school and to stay safe. However, on all, so on all the student computer sites like Wikipedia and social media are blocked, which seems like a good thing, but because I'm sure a lot of us have fallen into the trap of checking something for a few minutes, but then you look up and realize it's been a lot longer than a few minutes. Eventually, if students have access to these websites, they would realize that, and then they'd be able to develop habits and time management skills that would be helpful in a real world, world job. However, something we're concerned about is that with social media and other websites being blocked, students will not develop, we're scared that we won't develop the time management skills that we're going to need to be able to function in a society or in a job where we have access to that social media constantly. The same concept applies to Wikipedia. Wikipedia can be a very, can be an unreliable source, however, it can also have links to incredibly valuable sources. But if a student hasn't been using it for research experiences in school, then when they go to an actual job, my, our concern is that, is that they will take the unreliable information from Wikipedia because they don't know any better because they haven't learned, but they won't know how to get the reliable sources from it. And another more practical problem is the functionality of the computers. The Microsoft support page states that spyware monitor, spyware monitors your internet use and keystrokes, which adds delays. The problem is compounded when there are multiple spyware programs running at the same time. If the problem is severe enough, you can lose connectivity altogether. While spyware sounds like a negative thing, it, it's, the description of something that monitors internet use and keystrokes is exactly what is on the school computers, which can be helpful in keeping students safe by monitoring Google searches and, and checking for cheating with, with the keystrokes. However, because the school district has so many different, it says that compounding makes it worse. Because the school district has so many different websites blocked that don't necessarily need to be blocked for safety, it's slowing the computers down significantly, which makes it significantly harder to complete assignments on time and especially to get things to load in the school building, where that combined with the problem of having many computers in one space makes them significantly slower. So I'm asking that we consider removing the blocking of websites for things that aren't a safety issue, such as Wikipedia, social media, and game websites, so that the computers can work faster and so that students can build the time management skills that they will need to use when they have a, a job in the real world where they have access to these kinds of things. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Van Buskirk.
Good evening, esteemed board members. Carrie Van Buskirk, mother of two former Olathe South students with disabilities and an advocate for many others. The dictionary defines community as "a feeling of fellowship with others as a result of sharing common attitudes, interests, and goals." We hold a common interest and goal in supporting our students with disabilities. In our Olathe Public Schools, as wonderfully penned by our superintendent in our current parent guide, he stated, "We know that we, as a school district staff, and you as parents and guardians of these young people, have a shared responsibility and goal to help students reach their full potential. We stand ready to partner with you, your students, and the overall Olathe community as we embark on another year of growth and learning." Those very words, partnership, shared responsibility, and community, create that bright vision that we all hold so true that their future is our future. Yet data overwhelmingly shows that post-secondary future for our students with disabilities in our district is not currently a favorable one. We simply aren't making the progress, according to that data. But I'm not giving up. I'm not giving up or into that discouraging data either. I'm inviting you to roll up your sleeves in partnership and forge a path forward as a community that yields favorable outcomes for our disabled donors. I know that this is a heavy lift, considering the insurmountable industry shortages that we face today. This obstacle will require some out-of-box thinking and progressive action, but I truly believe that our Olathe Public Schools is up for the challenge. Some various ways that we can consider taking action would be to unionize our paras, allow them to do so. This may promote retention so very needed. Also, continue to provide that extended overlapping time between our case managers, district consultants, and paras necessary for planning. And as Kaylin actually shared, one of the other things I encourage you all to do is take a very careful look at policy KG2. It has not been revised for over 20 years, and the last time it was reviewed was 14 years ago. This policy serves as a barrier from allowing outside providers in, to work with our students, and it also inhibitors that valuable and necessary expert knowledge to transfer to our welcoming staff. Numerous studies show that true partnerships can only be realized when families have access to a broad range of community-based educational and support services for their autistic children. And the board policy KG2 blocks this partnership from being realized. So I ask that you carefully examine that again. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Patty Lanter.
Sorry, suddenly I have a blank sheet. So that's fun. But anyway, one thing in my blank sheet is that I, I read a study today from Columbia University regarding liberal, sorry, 86,000 high school seniors they surveyed, and state, found that adolescents are much more likely to have mental health issues if they have a liberal mindset. And since my entire item that I was going to speak on is gone, I will leave it at that and just let me know if you want to see that study. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comments. I would welcome a motion to adjourn to executive session for a period of 25 minutes.
I move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of discussing personnel pursuant to non-elected personnel exception under coma and return at 7:35 PM in this room.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Steele, seconded by Robert Kuhn.
Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt.
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich.
Yes.
Thank you.
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 The next item on our agenda is the action consent. Item, and we do have 7.01 through 7.14. I would welcome a motion.
I move to approve item 701 to 714 as presented.
Second. Motion by Will Babbitt, second by Claire Reagan, Ms. Bean. Mr. Babbitt? Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
The motion passes 5-0. Action bids, contracts, and agreements, 8.01 to 8.10. Is there a motion?
I move to approve 8.01 to 8.10 as presented.
Motion by Will Babbitt, second by Julie Steele, Ms. Bean. Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. 9.01, Board Policy Updates. I would welcome a motion to adopt updated board policy as listed.
I move to adopt updated board policy JGFGB and adopt a new board policy JGFA as presented. Second.
Motion by Will Babbitt, second by Robert Kuhn. Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0. Board, there's a lengthy list of future action items that we will review next month, as well as three informational written items included in the agenda this month. At this time, we would move to topics for discussion. Any board member like to start?
Well, I have to say, I was so thrilled to get to meet Ruth Ann Hackler this evening. I've been fangirling over Ms. Hackler for years because of her leadership in our community and winning her race by four votes. You know, I use her as an example about why voting, especially in, you know, the down ballot, more local races, is so very important. And, I mean, how often do you get to meet someone who's 100 years young? Very cool. Yeah, I just, you know, it's been a week, and our Olatha schools is such a blessing. And I would just wish all of you, you know, good moods and just remember why our schools are so successful and our kids are happy when they're in the buildings. And, you know, we can always improve, but schools are so important. And making sure that when it comes time to advocate for our district, that we can all be partners in that work. So, thank you very much.
Any other board member comments? I would just like, oh, Mr. Babbitt, go ahead. No, go ahead.
Okay, I've got a long one, so, sorry.
That's okay.
I've been building up my list. The first part of my story was stolen by Meadow Lane, actually. I was going to talk about the MathWings district competition, which was, I had never heard of before this year, but my son was lucky enough to go to the district one. And wow, that was, it's incredible. You have, I don't know how many kids, the entire Commons area of north completely full of elementary students doing math for fun. And they, it's so serious. They are, it's, you could hear a pen drop in there as they're reading the questions, and everybody's so excited for each other. Great sportsmanship was shown. And talking to some parents that were around me that taught at Blue Valley, they said they just, they don't have anything like that there. And it's, when I first heard about it, I thought it must be some national thing, but no, it's just an awesome Olatha thing, though. It was really, really cool to see, and congratulations to those kids for doing so well at it. And I'm really looking forward to the two more that are in the spring. The next one I had was the Jared Kuhn's Pumpkin Run in the beginning of this month, I believe. I was lucky enough to join the Countryside Cardinal Racers running for that. And it was, I thought it would just be, I've done 5Ks before, I thought it would just be that, but it was a huge event. Hundreds of kids out there, every elementary school had their mascots running around. They had all these kids dressed up and having a great time and were excited. We got to see the mascot race, which was entertaining. Nobody fell. The real highlight was seeing all these kids get together and raising the money for the great cause. The low light was having to actually run the 5K when I haven't done in 10 years. But the other highlight was finishing and being done. But it was, it was just a great thing to see. And the last one I had was today, I went to Indian Trail and saw a Vietnam-era helicopter that was brought in by the Quest students at Indian Trail. It was completely organized by the students. Their teacher, Ms. Cowick, said she was available to answer questions, but the students did the vast majority of the planning and organizing. They contacted the Vietnam Veterans of America to have them bring the vehicle there. They scheduled with all of the teachers to have the students come out and see it. The students were able to climb into the helicopter and speak to the veterans in attendance. The veterans were talking about their war experiences. They were not pulling punches. They were talking, it wasn't over the top, but they were talking about Asian orange and the effect it's had on them and the war experience on their life, and that it's just, freedom is not free, as they say. It was a great lesson for all the students that were there on the history of war and the impact it has on those who served. And it really, it highlighted for me the importance of the Quest program to the district and how these students can utilize their skills to empower the other students in their schools to have these great programs available for them. So, a big shout out to Ms. Cowick and her students, Harriet, Adele, Cambry, Effie, Libby, and Erin, who put it together and did it all themselves. It was, it was really incredible. And that's it for me.
I would ditto the comments I was at Indian Trail this morning as well, and spent some time with the kids and talking to the vets, and it was impressive. And the Quest kids were sporting their new jackets that say IT Quest in preparation for the Quest Olympics, March 26th, another event to attend. But they did. They presented themselves very well and very organized. I, this is a belated, congratulations, actually, because October was Principal's Month. And so, thank you and congratulations to the principals and to system principals of all of our schools in Olatha, because they're, we do, we have great schools, we have great opportunities for kids, but the leadership of our administrators is key in every location. And the Communications Department did a great job highlighting administrators and helping us get to know them on a more personal level through social media. So, kudos to all of you as well, and thank you. And a thank you to the communications, to Becky, for organizing the tribute to Ruth Ann Hackler tonight. She, as you could tell, was very touched, as were her family. So, thank you for that extra time. And that's really all I have. Any other board members before Dr. McMullin makes his comments?
All right. Well, I tell you, as a proud Olatha product, graduated of Olatha North High School, it's frankly extremely humbling and honored to be able to sit in this chair for tonight. So, realizing this is a one-time shot, I'm going to really enjoy the next 45 minutes of speaking to you. So, back in '81, when I, I'm kidding. All seriousness, I've got about, honestly, seven things I'd like to cover quickly, because all of them are worthy of recognition and just showcase all the great things we have going here in Olatha. The first are Horizon Award District nominee winners, Dr. Steve Murray from Olatha West, a science teacher and Marie Jones, first grade at Scarborough. Congratulations to them. Secondly, we talked about Santa Fe Trail earlier, and the new Cyclone closet opened, and that's a great resource for our community. And the beauty of the new building is it has an outside entrance into the closet that allows families to not only utilize it during the school day, but also during the weekend, and really is a great resource for that community. Two of our future Educator Academy graduates will be returning to our district to start their teaching careers soon. So, congrats to Julia Whitaker and Anna Bilham. Next, tomorrow is Parents' Teachers' Day, and, you know, we obviously are really proud of the work we do with our youngest learners in this district and really appreciate that staff and all they do. We have two schools celebrating big anniversaries this year. Chisholm Trail is celebrating 25 years, and Fairview is celebrating their 60th year. So, congrats to Principals Sola and Dimmitt and their staffs and the great work they do. Fall sports state champions, we've had a few, which is really exciting. Cross country was a big day for Olatha, as Olatha West's Braxton Thiel won the boys' 6A state individual champion title. The Olatha West girls team continued their streak and have now won five state titles in a row. Five. We're going to have to build a castle to hold all those trophies. Girls tennis, Olatha Northwest won the 6A state championship, and they are the first ever Olatha high school to win the girls' state tennis championship. Northwest also had an individual champion. Gymnastics, Olatha North won their fourth straight girls gymnastics state championship, and we also had two individual champions from Northwest as well. And the final two, American Education Week is coming up, as ONEA shared earlier in the presentation. Obviously, we're thankful for all of our educators, paraprofessionals, substitutes, everyone in this organization that makes Olatha the special place it is and the place that we're all proud of. Finally, Veterans' Day is on Monday, and I'd be remiss if I didn't, A, on behalf of the board and Dr. Jaeger, thank our veterans for their service. We have so many in this community and have had such a great impact, and really excited to see all the activities on this coming Monday in our schools. And I think you will be able to follow those on X/Twitter and see all the good things going on. And finally, just a shout out to Dr. Jaeger. Everybody likes the backup quarterback till he gets on the field. So, we're excited to get him back here next month and wish he and his family the best. And that concludes my comments.
Are there any veterans in the room tonight? Andy? Thank you. Thank you. Okay, item 14.01, Executive Session. I would welcome a motion, and we will need 25 minutes again.
I move that the board go into executive session for consultation with an attorney for the body or agency which would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship under a coma, and that the board return to the regular meeting at 8:15 in this room.
Second. Motion by Julie Steele, second by Claire Reagan. Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Approval of the resolution of the dispute concerning a student.
Second.
Motion by Robert Kuhn, second by Julie Steele.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes. Item 16.01, executive session, and we will need 15 minutes.
Second. Oh, motion. Do I need to make a motion?
Yeah.
To go to executive session.
I move that the board go to executive session for the purpose of discussing matters related to actions adversely or favorably affecting a person as a student under coma, and that the board return to the regular meeting at 8:55 PM in this room.
Second.
Motion by Claire Reagan, second by Will Babbitt.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
I move that the Board of Education adopt the recommendation of Dr. Jim McMullin, hearing officer, to amend the decision of the District Suspension and Expulsion Committee concerning the expulsion of student 2024-3A.
Second.
Motion by Julie Steele, second by Will Babbitt.
Dr. Yurkovich?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Babbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.